Oh, I guess I needed to get the, I got the thumbs up. Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning for our city council work session. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, can you please call the roll?
Cheetham.
Here.
Lurie.
Here.
Mankin.
Mansfield.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Alston.
Here.
Glad. Here. Thank you. It's nice to have Rick and Hayden back. Hayden filled in at the legislature yesterday and we weren't confident they were going to get, they were going to end. And so it's nice to have you both here. So, thank you for rushing back yesterday afternoon after the session was ended. So, with that, we'll go ahead and get going here with agenda number two is a construction board of appeals and review update. Representatives from the construction board of appeals and review will discuss the board's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations. And there, did you tell me that? You probably did. We don't have anybody here from it, and so we'll move to agenda item three is the fire union's quarterly update. Members from the Pocatello Fire Union will give the council an update of their activities for the past quarter. We're a bust. Is police gonna come through there or you, or you're gonna hide in the corner too?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I forgot to tell you. I heard from Jordan last night. He is out of state right now.
Okay.
So, he's not able to be here.
All right.
He said to tell us that he misses us.
Sounds good.
And he'll be back the next time.
Well, I'll tell you, we're moving through this agenda really quick. Police is gonna, police is gonna screw it up, it sounds like, but we'll go ahead and sneak out right now. We'll move to agenda item number four is the police union quarterly update. Members of the police, the Pocatello Police Union will give the council an update of their activities this past quarter. We just set a new record, council, two minutes to get through, clear to agenda item number four. That's pretty good.
Mayor Blad, council members, thank you for your time. My name's Sean Peterson. I'm the police union president. I'm here to give you the quarterly union update. Police union this quarter participated in several community events as well as donated, volunteered their time to the community and participate in some fundraisers. Community events for this quarter were during, we participated in a charity basketball game for Make-A-Wish Foundation. Unfortunately, the Casa Chili cook-off that we usually do was canceled by Casa due to some time conflicts. We were unable to participate in that. We participated in Color with a Cop at the Pine Ridge Mall, the ISU Tech Fair, the Easter Bashes for Easter Sunday, and then Chalk the Walk with the Family Service Alliance. Some of the donations that we made this, this quarter were to the Cook family, the charity Grace, or sorry, Grace Charity Auction. Casa, we still donated to their cook-off even though they didn't have it. The American Legion Baseball, Make-A-Wish Foundation, the Adams Family, sorry, Adamson Family, and the Meyer Family. As far as retention goes, we're participating in dispatch appreciation week next week. Also, we want to thank you guys for take-home vehicles. That's been a huge retention and recruiting bonus for us. Going forward, we're going to be participating in some other community events, as well as some planned participative fundraisers. We've got several job fairs lined up, the Fourth of July celebrations coming up the next quarter, the youth, their summer program, high school leadership program, and the Citizens Academy is currently going on right now. We also plan to participate in a charity golf tournament for the Special Olympics as well as a torch run for that, and then another charity golf tournament for Casa. So, that's what I have for you guys today. Do you guys have any questions that I can answer for you?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Sean, could you elaborate on the dispatch appreciation week?
Yeah, so it's a week that's just scheduled, it's the same time every year, and it's a week that we appreciate the dispatchers, and so we typically buy them a type of gift, we provide a lunch to them, and just show our appreciation all week for the work that they do.
For all shifts?
Yes.
Is there any particular events that are scheduled that week?
Not that I'm aware of, other than, like I said, we have a lunch planned for them. That would be the only one that I could say specifically.
What day is that?
I think we'll probably do it Wednesday, midweek, and then for the dispatchers that aren't here during that shift, we'll end up buying pizza or something like that for the, so to make sure that every shift gets something.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Council President Lurie?
So, Councilmember Cheetham read my mind and stole my questions, but that was what I was gonna ask, but I'll just add one thing. Can we participate? Is there a way that we can come and support?
Yeah, absolutely. I would say the best way for you guys to participate is to come to that lunch that we'll hold. At this point, I'm thinking of barbecue, so we'll pull our big barbecue out and we'll throw some burgers out, and we'll send an email out and everyone can come participate.
Okay.
So, I'll send an email.
We'd love to come and show our appreciation.
Appreciate that.
So, thank you.
So, for any other questions? Just a big thank you to the police and the union and for all that you do in our communities. So, thank you.
Yeah. Mayor and city council, I'd like to thank you for your guys' continued support. Extremely helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to agenda item five is airport master plan update. David Mitchell, Aurora Group, and airport staff members will be present to provide council a final review of the update of the master, airport master plan and receive council's feedback.
Oh, I unplugged the wrong one. Wow, sorry, Ken.
Mayor, council members, good morning. I'm Dave Mitchell with our Dura Group. We're the firm that's been working on your airport master plan for a while now, and we're getting to the end. So, we wanted to give you a quick update. We're to the point where we have documents ready to submit to the FAA, so we wanted to give you a quick summary of that, answer any questions you may have, and let you know the last few steps in our, in our process. So, that's what we're here today to do. Our, sorry, clicking on the wrong spot. Just, this is the table of contents from, from the master plan. I'll spend just a few minutes walking through the, the process because the process really aligns with these chapters. We have, obviously, after the executive summary and introduction, just a quick overview of the airport, where you're at today, and then what we call the inventory, which is a snapshot of where the airport was when we started this process. We look at really every aspect of the airport, your airfield, the terminal, the, what we call landside, which is the, the part where airplanes aren't on your airport, and, and kind of take a picture of where the airport is, and, and also what, what aircraft currently use the airport, the traffic that you have today, and passengers as well. And then we develop a forecast, kind of look into the future as best we can. I'll talk a little bit more about that process in a minute, but make an educated guess for what the, what the future holds for the airport. And then, based on that forecast, look at what facilities you need. You have certain facilities, the forecast says you're gonna have more traffic ultimately. Do you need additional facilities to accommodate that traffic? So, we developed that, so these are facility requirements, and then we develop alternatives to address those requirements. We have to do, based on the preferred alternatives, we have to do an environmental overview, which is not a study per se, it's just based on these proposed improvements to the airport, what sort of environmental impacts could there be that, that need to be accounted for in the future as, as you develop those projects. And then, federal requirement is that we have a recycling and solid waste management plan. I'll refrain from further comment on that. And then we develop an airport layout plan, which is a set of drawings that depict the airport and your future plans for the airport. That's really the, the crux of the plan is that airport layout plan. And then, we look at financial feasibility and, and implementation plan for the projects that, that we've identified. And then, then lastly, another requirement that the FAA has added in recent years is what they call planning for compliance. So, you take money from the federal government, with that money comes some strings, a number of strings for grant assurances and things like that. And so, that chapter just looks at complying with those assurances and summarizes those assurances for you. So, you don't have any issues with assurance, with compliance at your airport. So, it just kind of documents that and outlines what those requirements are for future reference, basically. So, going back into the process, the inventory, as I said, we're looking for the baseline conditions before we started the plan. We look at the entire airport, as I mentioned, there's a whole variety of categories that we need to look at beyond just airplanes and passengers, things like air cargo facilities, you know, the businesses that do business at your airport, and non-aerogonical uses of your airport. We didn't get a lot into that. Your airport's unique in that respect, you have a lot of land, and, and quite a bit of, quite a few businesses that operate out there, of course, that have nothing to do with aviation. So, we did document that those exist, but, but it's FAA plan, so they want us to focus more on the aviation-related aspects of your airport. So, I know you have other efforts underway to, to further develop that property and maximize the use of that land, but this plan didn't really get that far into that. We were more focused on, on the aviation aspects. We did take, take advantage of this opportunity. Really, this isn't normal per se in a, in an airport master plan, but talking with Alan and Christie and your staff out there as we were scoping this master plan, we thought it would be a good idea to take a look at the facilities that you own and use out there, the primary facilities, anyway, being the terminal, the stormy little equipment building, and the fire station out there. Just, we had an architect on the team come in and doing a valuation of those facilities. Are they big enough? Do they meet your needs from that perspective? And then also, just take a look at the systems in, in those buildings. Are there, is there some hidden, and the goal is to find, is there some hidden big cost that's coming because you need a whole new HVAC system or something like that? So, so this table summarizes that. As you can see, everything's in great shape overall. The only things they identified was, was HVAC in the commercial terminal, probably needed some updating relatively soon. It still works, but, but just was getting old. And then, the exterior lighting at the, at the ARF building didn't, doesn't meet current code for energy usage, and it could be an improvement to make there to save power more than anything else. So, bottom line, overall, your facility's in great shape. You don't need additional terminal space. Your terminal, especially your secure holding area, is excellent. It's very large and in great shape, so that's great. You obviously don't need additional ticketing counters or anything like that. So, so the terminal's in, you know, in good shape, and for its age is extremely well-maintained, which is, speaks to the efforts of your staff and the city's efforts to maintain that facility over the years, so. Any questions on facility stuff? And by the way, of course, feel free to interrupt at any point. I have a tendency to speak airport, so if I say something or use an acronym, you don't understand, stop me. The forecast, we looked at really three main areas, total operations, what we call enplanements, an enplanement is a person who starts a trip, gets on an airplane to fly somewhere from your airport, a commercial, commercial flight. And then we look at what we call the fleet mix, which is just the mix of aircraft that use your airport, and then we had to determine what a critical aircraft is. And a critical aircraft is, is just the aircraft that, that dictates what design parameters we should use. And by definition from the FAA, that's an aircraft that operates at your airport 500 times or more per year, and operation is a takeoff or a landing. So, anyway, I'll, I'll get into that some more in a minute, but the, the total operations, you know, we have a baseline year of 2021, and then, then we, we develop a forecast, which shows that, that growth rate over the 20-year period of about 3/4 of a percent per year. And then passenger enplanements, those were higher when we started this study and have dipped a little bit because you, you lost a flight in there. So, so we had to account for that, and then we showed it recovering and ultimately getting back to a, to a healthy number. Now, will this happen? I have no idea. This is an educated guess, as I said earlier, but, but what we wanted to do was, what we, as we developed this forecast, we, we had sort of two extremes to it. One was kind of the depressing version, and one was the more super optimistic version. What we felt was best to be more middle-of-the-road with that. We want to make sure that, that's realistic and, and that, but that we, that your facilities could accommodate what would be a, a healthy growth. The last thing you want is to, to be halfway through your master, master plan, your planning period, and, and really need a major facility improvement that you haven't budgeted for. So, that still could happen if somebody discovers lithium and Pocatello and, and the city grows greatly, but obviously, if that happens, you'd need to replan, redo your plan, basically, because a major economic situation has changed.
David, we have a question. Councilmember Nichols.
Have we recovered from the drop-off due to COVID? And if so, sort of where are we?
Yeah.
Ridership-wise?
Christie, you might be better able to answer that.
Councilmember Nichols, Christie Hines, Airport Management Assistant. Recovery has a couple of different terms. Passenger number-wise, yes, we have as many passengers. For the size of aircraft, because they've increased the aircraft size, our load factor is lower than it was pre-COVID because the aircraft are bigger, but we have doubled the number of passengers that we had last year with the one flight. So, in number of passengers being served, yes, it's fairly close. Load factor for the larger aircraft, it's not quite there yet.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Cheetham?
On that same line, I look at the total enplanements in the green, the second row down.
Right.
If base year's 21,000 to 25,000, and 26 is only 18,7, it looks like we haven't recovered. It looks like we're still, we still have a ways to go to get back to where we were.
Right. And, and part of that, again, was because, the, the decrease was because you lost, you had two flights a day when we started this study, you'd lost one of those flights.
So, the forecast was established when we were still at one flight a day. So, it was starting at one flight a day, and we've already added the second. So, it was based on a one-flight-a-day at the time.
Yeah, and I apologize for this, there's, there's not a lot I could do about it, but the, the forecast, there are two elements of your plan that the FAA approves. One is the airport layout plan at the end, and the other is the forecast. And so, when we developed the forecast, we submitted that to the FAA, they reviewed it for a ridiculous amount of time, and finally approved it, and we can't really change it once they approve it unless something really crazy happened. We, that would be a, a big step back. So, the, the, you know, the, the forecast is already wrong, I guess is what I'm saying. But, but that, that's not unusual for a master plan process, unfortunately. It's, but it's not wrong enough that, oh, well, all of our assumptions are wrong, so, so we don't have to go back and relook at everything because your facilities are adequate.
Mr. Mayor, if I could follow up?
A follow-up, yeah.
If we were to reforecast 26, where would it probably be then?
What are your most recent enplanement numbers? I meant to ask this before we start.
That's a good question because we've only had the second flight since September, so we don't have a full year's worth. But number-wise was, was double what we were in 23, and I track them by both enplanement and deplanement. Probably, I'm gonna say it wrong, I can get you the enplanement numbers for 23, the total number 23. I'm gonna guess enplanement, I'm gonna guess wrong, but was, it was a mix of one flight and two, so it was probably 20,000.
And we're, we're double that?
Yeah, for, about since the second flight has started for that last six months.
So, you're probably ahead of, for 24, my guess is you'd be ahead of where we show you in 26. And as you can see there, by 31, we had anticipated a, a second flight coming back and you're recovering. So, you probably would be, I'm, I'm sure that you'd be back to the 25 this year, probably closer to 30, just guessing.
Okay.
To answer my questions, I was gonna ask about recent enplanements.
All right.
And the, just one, one point there, as I'm sure you know or have gathered, the airline industry is difficult right now. They make changes quickly. If, you know, if, if things aren't going exactly how they want it to go, they'll, they'll pull a flight despite whatever they've committed to, they, they will do that. And there's very little you can do about that. The best you can do is just continue to provide the facilities that they need, which your airport does a great job of that, and then fill the airplanes up. If the airplanes are full, they'll stay. And I know council doesn't necessarily have a lot to do with whether the planes are full or not, but continuing to emphasize that and, and for the community to keep them full, then, then you'll keep the service you have.
Councilmember Cheetham?
One more.
Sure.
I, I'm confused by the forecast year improvements and what I see happening and the negative numbers in the compound annual growth rate numbers for five, 10, and 15 years. Those are, those appear to be negative?
Well, that, that was because of that, I mean, 25,000 dropped after we started the study, that dropped down below 18,786 because you lost the second flight. And so, so we showed that, that net, that net loss in that first five years is reflected in the negative CAGR for the first five-year period. But then we showed a recovering in the 10-year and the 20-year.
So, based on the growth that you're forecasting, those numbers are wrong too? If we're not even gonna be back to where we were in 21, after 20 years, we're still down 0.94%? Is that, is, am I reading that wrong?
Uh, I, so we show there in the total enplanements, 25,000 in 21, dropping to 20, in 26 to 18,786. Then by 2031, back to 39,000, so that's more than when we started.
I think, or you're talking about the total commercial operations.
Oh, operations. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was looking at the wrong line. Yeah. The, the reason for that difference is, is what the airlines call upgauging. They're using larger aircraft, so you'll have fewer operations but more seats.
In 21, we had three daily flights, so there were six total operations every day. We'll have the same amount of seats with two flights for operations every day instead of six. So, operations may very well be less, but we'll be able to serve the same amount of passengers.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I apologize, council, councilman, I wasn't following, tracking with you. And, and one of the things that we assumed in here, or that we accounted for, is that there are airlines like Allegiant that offer, that operate larger aircraft but on a reduced schedule, they operate one or two days a week. We did account for that in the forecast. I can't promise that that's going to happen, but we, we did want to account for that in case there was something that that drove in terms of your facilities. You know, if a larger airplane like that meant a change to the terminal, which it doesn't, but that's what's at our place.
All right. Councilmember Nichols?
So, this master plan update is an FAA requirement, is that right?
Correct.
So, how does the FAA then use this data? I mean, is it used for determining grants and so forth?
Right. Fundamentally, in order to get a grant from the FAA, you have to have an approved airport master plan, approved by them, airport layout plan that shows the improvements that you want to use that money for. And so, that, that's how they use it, is, is primarily interacting with you on, we would like to build this area for hangars. Okay, is it shown on your ALP? Yes. All right, we'll give you money to do that. But that's the main way that it's done, that, that it's used. Beyond that, it's, it doesn't necessarily affect funding or funding decisions per se, that's made on a project-by-project basis.
And we should let you know, this plan is by no way dictates what we can or can't do. It's just our general plan. We'll use this to develop our five-year CIP that we redo every year, say five years out, what are we gonna use your grant monies for? And we'll use this to populate those projects, but it can be, it could change at any time, of course, depending on conditions, and if all of a sudden we get five different flights and then we have to redo it. So, FAA does not restrict you in what you can use the grants for just because it's not in your master plan, but if a condition changes, then you can alter your plan.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Just, just briefly, the total based aircraft down at the bottom there, we, we don't show a lot of change there. That's just a based aircraft, obviously, an aircraft that is at your airport most of the time. The, how, how we developed this, we use, the FAA has what's called the Terminal Area Forecast, which is a national forecast that they're required to, to maintain by federal law. As a starting point, it's usually not very accurate at, at the local airport level, shocking, I know. In terms of the overall system, it's pretty accurate, but at airport by airport, it, it's not, it's not that accurate, just because they don't get that granular in how they look at it. And then we look at census data, economic data, economic trends in the area, and then market trends in the industry. As I mentioned, the airlines are going, for example, are going to larger aircraft, and that's really driven by the pilot shortage, if you're curious as to why that is. It's because it takes two pilots to fly a 50-seat aircraft, it takes two pilots, pilots to fly a 500-seat aircraft. So, if they can fly larger aircraft, then they're more efficient with, with their pilots, so. And there is a severe pilot shortage, as I'm, I'm sure you've heard, in the country. And so, anyway, we, we do that, we develop trends, and then we kind of massage that to get, get a number that we're comfortable with, your staff's comfortable with, and the FAA is comfortable with. So, again, they're pretty much always wrong. If they're not wrong, then you get lucky. But, but they, they are, they're right enough that they give us a good picture of the trends that we can plan for the future. Critical aircraft, we, we really ended up with three at your airport, which is somewhat unusual for a commercial service. You currently have the CRJ, well, when we started the study, we were operating the CRJ 200. The airlines are getting rid of those and switching to the EMB 175. Are you still on the 700 today? Right now, you're, you're operating the CRJ, the CRJ 200's a 50-seat version, the RJ 700 is the 74, 76-seat version, and then the EMB 175 is where they're all moving toward, which is also a 76-seat aircraft.
They're actually bringing in the EMB, sorry, not the CRJ. They are bringing in the EMBs.
Oh, is it now? Yeah. And then, for, that's for the commercial service areas, the general aviation areas, the controlling aircrafts that beat 1900. And then, your airport's unique in that you have a fair number of operations by the DC-10, which is much larger than everything else out there. You don't, that's technically not a critical aircraft at your airport because it doesn't operate 500 times a year yet, most years. So, but the FAA allowed us to consider that aircraft in our planning because if, if we eliminate that from the planning, then things like taxiway width and runway width and all that stuff get difficult. To, if we planned for your traffic without that, it would be harder for that aircraft to continue operating here, and that's important to BLM and to the region and really to the country, that it be allowed to, to operate here. So, so we did plan for that, mainly with the primary runway and taxiway alpha to get to that ramp, and, and that's it. Summary of facility requirements, the things that we found or identified, both runways have, have safety areas that are not compliant in, in kind of minor ways. The runway 321 is your primary runway, and that, down in the, let's see if I can, show. Down in, in this area, the safety area, which is on both sides of the runway and goes off the end, touches the edge of taxiway alpha there, and so that's an issue that we had to address. And then, off the ends of the runways are trapezoidal areas called runway protection zones, and for runway 1735, that covers the interstate, which by standards is, should not happen. It's not, not the biggest deal that it does, but, but those are two areas that were identified. Runway 1735 is what, what's called a crosswind. Runway 1735 is what, what's called a crosswind runway. Currently, that runway is designed for larger aircraft. Based on the wind coverage at the airport, what we call wind coverage, which is the, the wind conditions at the airport, it's not needed for larger aircraft to have a crosswind runway. And so, in the future, that, what's justified there is, is a, is a runway for smaller and lighter aircraft because they're more affected by crosswinds. And then, hangar development needs, needs to catch up. You have quite a bit of demand and, and not enough hangars. And then, related to wind, I, I have another slide that describes this a little bit better, but the, a supplemental wind sensor would, would be helpful, and I'll just jump to that next slide. Sorry, this, this graphic isn't that easy to read, but currently, there's a weather station on the airport, right in the middle of the airport, basically. It's called a ASOS, which, at the moment, I can't remember what that stands for, but it's a, a Surface Automated Surface Obser- Observation System. There you go. Which is a, it just measures wind, cloud cover, visibility, and precipitation, and reports that to the National Weather Service and to the FAA. Where it is right now, it doesn't accurately reflect winds from the Arbonne Valley. And so, when we looked, when we first looked at wind, it said, you don't need a crosswind runway at all, which you can keep the runway. It just means that the FAA wouldn't pay for it. We got some supplemental wind information from the Weather Service, and, and that, that showed that you could keep it, but it's not justified for all aircraft. And I apologize if I'm skipping over, it's a technical analysis that I can describe in further detail if you'd like me to, but basically, the, the outcome here is just because of the topography out there and where the winds come from at the airport, a, a secondary wind sensor would be helpful. So, that's, and that was, you know, National Weather Service requested that and as well as the tower. So, we incorporated that into the plan, is the point. The, at, at the bottom, reducing the design of the, the runway from C3 to ABE1, what that just has to do with the size and speed of aircraft that use the airport. So currently, the commercial aircraft can land on, on that runway. Ultimately, what's justified out there is a smaller runway. That doesn't mean you have to tear anything up. That doesn't mean you have to make any changes today. And by the time that runway needs a major rehabilitation or reconstruction, it would be something to revisit with the FAA. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
When you say smaller, what, you mean shorter or narrower or both?
Both. So it would, it's currently 5,000 feet by 100 feet, and roughly, and it would go, no, it's 7,000 by 100 feet, and it would go down to 5,000 by 75. But again.
Or we could pay ourselves to keep it as big as we want, but that's what FAA would pay for, based on this data.
Councilmember Mansfield?
Is there a possibility with the additional wind sensor that the supplemental data, let's say, we need to rehabilitate this runway in five years? With five years of additional data from the supplemental wind sensor, is there a possibility that it could be back upgraded?
Yes.
To the need, based on our weather conditions that you've observed?
And, and generally, wind conditions at a, at a site are consistent, but they, they do change over time. And you know, as the climate shifts in certain parts of the world, that you see that more. So, it, it's something that you, you always look at, and, and when the time comes for a large project like that, you'd relook at it, for sure, so.
Councilmember Nichols?
Any idea what a supplemental wind sensor costs? I mean, is it a big-ticket item?
No, it's not. I, I don't know exactly, but I would say less than $50,000.
All right, thank you.
So, we developed alternatives. There, there really wasn't a lot that needed to be fixed at your airport, which is good, good news. As I mentioned, we talked about, about runway, well, the first thing we look at is runways, obviously. As I mentioned, the 1735 will maintain that existing length, that's 7,150 feet for now. And then, as I said, when it, when it needs a major project, you, you would have to have that discussion with the FAA about what the ultimate length would be based on current wind conditions and, and traffic. So, it's in terrific shape. It's really held up very well. So, it, it will stay at that length for quite some time. The, on 321, there, there's really nothing that needs to be done there regarding the runway itself. Just that safety area, you can see it. This rectangle here is, it touches the edge of taxiway alpha today. So we'll fix that by, by moving taxiway alpha over to get, to get the wingtip of an aircraft out of that safety area. I realize that seemed, that may seem kinda silly, but because the likelihood of an aircraft having its wingtip in that corner and another aircraft ending up there is pretty low, but this is the FAA, so. We, we just kinda, they care a lot about standards, especially runway suit tiers are very critical to them, so.
I just wanna throw in, Dave said that we really don't need to do anything with runway 321. This is, design-wise, compliance-wise, we have a full rehab of that runway coming up in a year or two, you will see, so I just don't want anyone to say, well, wait. Dave said there's nothing wrong with the runway. It is due for a full pavement rehab, but design-wise, there's nothing wrong with it.
Thank you, and I actually was, when I talk about implementation, I was gonna mention that, that maintenance project, because it is definitely a big-ticket item. Taxiway-wise, the, the only thing, I, I mentioned alpha, moving it out of the, well, not the only thing, but that's the main thing, is moving it out of the safety area. Taxiway Gulf is over on the other side of the airport. Eventually, it will need to be rebuilt, and when it's, when it's rebuilt, right now, it, it approach, it comes into the runway end at an odd angle. When it gets rebuilt, it would, it would be better if it came in at a right angle at the end of the runway there. And then the other thing is building some taxi, taxiways, taxi lanes for hangar development here and here. So, that's that. And then hangars, same story, having a space, having space for larger hangars over here on the west end of the airport and GA hangars, smaller hangars over at the east end. Just to point out, that does mean removal, to make this happen, that would mean removal of the Speedway at the airport. Just wanna put that out. And then that supplemental wind center, wind sensor would go at the, at the west end of the airfield. But, but as I said, not, not a lot of major changes to the airport. Your previous master plan, I was kind of glancing through it this morning and showed a, a much more robust, much more robust development on the airport, including a taxiway across the middle of the infield here and a parallel taxiway on 1735 and a hangar development over here. In talking about that, we just didn't feel like the demand was there, and to develop a hangar complex over here would be extremely expensive. You don't have any utilities over there. Water and wastewater and power are not really, are not readily available over there. So, it, it just didn't seem to make sense to me to include that in a 20-year plan if the demand isn't there, and, and the cost would just be so high. So, so we did take that out, if, if you've noticed that on the previous plan. Our, our thought is we could accommodate the demand within the existing footprint, developed footprint of your airport, so, so that made more sense to us, if that makes sense. I'm not criticizing the previous plan, I just think the different philosophies appropriate at this point. The implementation plan, this slide is a little hard to read, I apologize for that, but, but basically, we divided it, the implementation chapter divides the development into short, short-term, middle, medium-term, and long-term projects. And in the short term is that improvement to taxiway A, and then a very large maintenance project on rehabilitation project on the runway. And so, our estimate for that project is about $15 million, and that would need to be done in the next three to five years, most likely. We've already started some preliminary design work on that. So, you know, the FAA is aware of that project, it's, it's in their plan to, to give you discretionary funding to, to fund that, but you, of course, for you, the big ticket there is matching that grant, but that is in there and will be reflected in the, in the master plan. The rest of the things are, you know, hangar development areas, aprons that need to be rehabilitated or improved, parking, parking rehabilitation improvements to the entrance, things like that. So, not, other than that big-ticket item for the, for the runway rehabilitation, it's, it's not a super-expensive capital improvement or implementation plan. So, hopefully that's good news. Most of it, most of the improvements in the medium and long term can be done with your normal FAA grant cycle, don't need some extraordinary funding, so.
Okay, we have a question by councilmember Paulson.
How does flight service work during the runway rehabilitation?
Yeah, it'll, well, if 1735's, since it will be, it, it would be available if the airlines are comfortable using it, which they should be. It would be perhaps more limited just because, in bad weather, because you don't have the same instrument approaches to that runway that you have to the primary, but it shouldn't have a big impact on, on this airport, because you do have that second runway, so.
But yeah, we will have to close the main runway for a period of time.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, we've done a number of major runway rehabilitations over the years, and we get it, it's a big deal, and we, we work really hard to limit that closure, but, but it's a big area. So, you know, almost 10,000 feet long and 150 feet wide, it's a lot of asphalt, so it just takes a while to do, but we, we put together as aggressive a schedule as we can justify, so.
So we will, oh, Dave will get to that at the end, I'm sure. Never mind.
Okay. Just numbers-wise, total short-term, our, our implementation plan has 26, almost $27 million in it. The, the largest chunk of that, of course, is that runway project. Medium-term is about 11 million, and then the longer-term get, has, has a higher number again because there's some, some larger ticket items in there. But it's at about 23 million. That just includes some big, the big hangar development areas can be more expensive to build. And those will only be, those would just be driven by demand. You wouldn't do that unless you, you have the demand. And most of that, most of that, those numbers are eligible for federal participation, so. I'm gonna go through every detail of this plan, I'm kidding. This is the airport layout plan, it's possible to read on the slide. You know, it'll be on the website. I, I checked this morning, I thought it was on there already, but it's not. We'll get that fixed and make sure that all the documents are on the website, so you and, and the public can, can take a look at them. This plan just, just outlines, it outlines all that development, but it also identifies a bunch of things that the FAA wants to look at to make sure that the airport meets standards, meets their standards. So, this and, and the airport layout plan set, I got another slide that, it's really a, a packet of, of sheets and, and has all these specific areas, again, that the FAA requires. But the key one is sheet three, the airport layout plan itself. And so, this will go to, this set will go to the FAA soon, and for them to review and approve. And then, once it's approved, it will need to come back to council, probably in a regular meeting, to be adopted. At the end of the, the plan, the, the mayor will need to sign it, and, and it's your commitment to, this is our best, our best look at how we're gonna manage and develop our airport over the next 20 years. As Christie mentioned, you're not locked into that. You can change course. If you had a, if a cargo operator came to you and said, you know, we'd really like to build a cargo apron over here and start flying 757s into the airport, the FAA is not gonna say no to that. You, you would just have to accommodate, you know, reflect that on your ALP, you can do a, you don't have to do this whole process again. You could just draw that in, get them to sign off on that, and then move forward with that project. So, so you certainly have a lot of flexibility, and, and you're not, again, you're not committing to do all the work in here. It will all be demand-driven as, as the time comes.
Councilmember Chitam?
I have several questions. I've been at a couple of meetings the last couple of months about airports, and one of the things that I've consistently heard across the state is the demand for hangars. Both GA and commercial hangar needs. What can we do, based on your experience, to help this airport accomplish that?
Yeah, the, the, and that, that is a huge demand. Really, I, I'm not exactly sure why this is connected, but ever since COVID, it's been a huge demand to build hangars. And, and I think part of it is people moving away from larger urban areas to more rural areas, and some of those people have airplanes and they wanna keep their airplane where they live, of course, but the, the, the main thing is infrastructure, is having, you know, the taxi lane to get to those hangars in place, and, and FAA usually will help you build that. And then having utilities available for them, which the FAA usually will not pay for. So, having, and again, trying to keep this to the existing flight line area makes that a lot cheaper to get utilities to it. But, but those things, having the space that's ready for having a prepared site makes that more attractive for, for hangar developers.
And one of our current plans is design of the taxi lane in the, the newly recommended area down at the Speedway. So we will have a taxi lane, the initial taxi lane, ready, we're designing that now and getting ready to build that. So we will have that, open that area up. But the hangars themselves, yeah, FAA does not pay for, so we rely on whoever wants the hangar comes in and pays to build it themselves.
If I could follow up, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Do we need to pre-install, if you will, power and sewer and water and those things to make that more attractive to a potential commercial or GA user?
Well, you don't need to, but it does make it more attractive. If you, especially because, you, you know, you can't give, you can't give them the land or sell them the land. You can only lease it to them. And, and the FAA, part of your grant assurances is that you're not gonna hand that land over to them forever. So typically, the FAA wants you to have a 30-year or lower term on the lease. And so, so, you know, if you think about it, if you're gonna lease the ground and build a building on that, you're paying for that building. If you have to add the costs of getting the utilities there, that pencils in to, well, am I gonna do this or not? So, so it does make it more attractive, but at the same time, you, you have to weigh out, does it make sense for the, for the city to do that? Financially, it doesn't make sense, you know, because you have to make that investment in infrastructure. Is, is your, is leasing the ground going to get you that money back? I don't, I don't know. That's what you have to figure out. But there, there is other revenue that you gain by having an airplane operate off an airport from fuel flowage and, and those sorts of things. But, but yeah. It, it's complicated and it's a chicken and egg thing, and for, for you to, to figure out the cash flow of that is a big part of that decision-making.
I'm not quite done.
Okay.
When we redo the taxiways, is it time for that old tower to come down?
Go ahead.
It could be time for the old tower to come down at any time. It's a cost, it's not one that we can get FAA funding for, so it will be solely borne by the city.
Yeah. I was in it last summer, and what a mess.
Yeah, it's, we've had people interested in it over the years.
I know somebody that wants to make it into an Airbnb, so.
Yeah, so do I. I showed it to him last summer, and they went, oh, no.
That was your fault, then.
Yeah. Equipment for larger aircraft, are we prepared for that if somebody wants to bring in larger aircraft? Do we, can we handle larger aircraft than what we're currently doing?
For, for occasional operations, sure. If, if it became a regularly scheduled larger aircraft, you might need a larger fire truck out there, which again, the FAA would help you pay for. But that would be the only thing I can think of that, that would be different.
As far as aircraft handling equipment, the airport doesn't really own any of that. It's up to the airline to provide it. It's up to the airline to provide it, or the FBO, the AV Center, if they're handling it as a private aircraft, they have stairs, they have tugs, they, so it would be something that we would need to talk about with them if they're going to start handling larger aircraft.
Can our baggage area handle 150 deployments? I mean, do do we, are we big enough in that area that we can look into that future?
Yeah, I think you're fine for like a 737-type aircraft, and I don't see you have anything bigger than that anytime soon.
Okay. Good, thank you.
It'd be more crowded than you're used to, but it it could, it could flow the past the baggage there.
Is general aviation not considered critical? Or is it only commercial when you look at those definitions?
No, I wouldn't say that. The FAA focuses a lot on commercial aviation, because the safety of commercial aviation is so important to, not that the safety of general aviation isn't important, but the safety of of commercial aviation is so important, because a lot more people in our country interact with that segment of aviation than general aviation, if that makes sense. And it also is where most of the funding comes from, because most of the field taxes and certainly all the ticket taxes are paid for by commercial service. So that is their primary focus. But general aviation matters. The BLM, that technically, general aviation is anything that's not commercial service and not military, that's general aviation, so it's a pretty broad category. So the the fire operations are 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 looked at under the general aviation rules. So they care a lot about it, but if it comes down to it, they're going to fund the commercial service first because of the the safety of so many more people who's involved with that.
So business travel is general, considered general aviation? Okay.
If by business travel you mean, like?
Business.
Private jets.
Yeah, you know, the big twins and the light jets.
Yep.
Council President Lurick?
I just wanted to go back to the topic that Rick was talking about with hangar development. If you could go back a few slides where we were talking about the footprint and developing inside and outside, yeah, that one. And you pointed to that area in the upper left there, and said that that would be very expensive to, because it doesn't have that infrastructure in it yet, it doesn't have the utilities and everything. But when we think about the demand for hangars, and we're talking about how that us having a prepared site would help with meeting that demand, and we're looking at a 20-year plan here, I understand the expense of it, but is it something we should not be considering right now?
Well, that's a good question. I wouldn't say forget about it forever. I wouldn't say get rid of that property by any means. What what I I'm saying is that, based on the numbers that we have, you can accommodate your 20-year demand in the in the footprint on the south side of the airport there. So every time we do a master plan update, we look at a 20-year planning window, but the FAA recommends you update them every 10 years. So, you know, 10, six to 10 years from now, you'll be doing this again. And then you can look at, okay, well, we developed the hangar area over there on the east end, and the hangar over on the west end, and they're getting pretty full, we better, we got to find another spot. And then you'd look at, okay, should we go northwest or west? Should we go over here? You know, is there some other area, what makes the most sense? And then you'd look at it for real, is what what would it take to get water and sewer out there and and those sorts of things?
But when you're saying, you know, the demand's not there yet, and and maybe the expense isn't worth it right now, you're not necessarily saying that that will be the case for 20 years. We would maybe reevaluate halfway through, like, six to 10 years, and see if that has changed.
Sure, and if, if you start developing this area, and word gets out that Pocatello has room for hangars, and we've seen at other airports, like developers, private developers coming in and saying, I want all these spots, because I'm going to build the hangars and I'll lease them to somebody else. And they can make that pencil, and and it works for them to do that. If this filled up in four or five years, then it'd be, hey, FAA, we need to relook at this. And they'd say, well, of course you do, go do it. And so you don't have to wait 10 years, is my point, and you don't have to wait 20 years, you're not, again, you're not locking yourself into anything. If if the market changes, then you relook at it.
That GA hangar development, it's labeled there with number two and three, based on how we've drawn it out, there's space for 20-ish hangars?
Yeah, with additional room for for more.
Pretty good amount.
Single aircraft hangars.
You could maybe fit two in some of them. We have kind of front rows as a little bit larger and then smaller, so. And then on the west side, it would be more of corporate hangars, business use hangars, commercial operation hangars on the west side. So we feel that this gives us adequate for the, even the increased demand we've seen to last for several years before we have to move elsewhere.
I just wanted to make sure that we're not saying we can't.
Yeah, we know.
Do anything for 20 years, yeah, because we may well want to, or things may change, yes.
I mean, I suppose if, if it made the council feel better, we could just put a box over here, future development area. It it might be worth it, because, you know, the six of you may not be at this table 10 years from now, and the airport management may have changed, and I won't be here, so that.
I think it'll be changed, if it needs to be changed, we can change it. But it's pretty clear, if it needs to be changed, we can change it, there's no reason to add boxes and stuff like that.
But if we're going to put a box in, would it go along 1735 or along Taxiway G? To me, G makes more sense, because you've got access to both runways.
Well, and at this point, there's theoretically boxes on both. And when we need it, that's when we would do a plan to look into, how much is each going to cost, how much space would each give us? So in your mind, there's boxes of both.
You you own all this land? I think your property lines out here, and obviously, you own, the fence is here, and I think you even own some property outside the fence over on this side. So you're in control of it, nothing's going to happen to it without you're, you saying it's going to, basically. So I I don't think it's, I don't think it's a, it's not, to me, it's not a concern, but if if you're concerned, I can change it, but.
We're not concerned, don't don't add boxes, we're not concerned. Thank you, we've got a question by Councilmember Nichols.
Sure. So for the hangar development sites, as shown here, what is the status of utilities to those sites? Do we have utilities close by?
Yeah, I mean, you, obviously, you have full utilities all along the flight line area from all the existing buildings there. Over here, the the utilities are in in this area, and obviously, to the art, the fire station there. So this one, there'd be a little bit more of an extension, here, it's just a matter of tying tying in to water and sewer. So over here, it's actually quite simple to do, once the Speedway's out of the way.
And for the, we just recently entered into some ground leases for hangars, were utilities an issue there at all?
No, the way we have done it thus far is the person building the hangar is responsible for getting the utilities to their site. It hasn't been an issue for those recent ones, so.
All of those, all of those hangars that we've been doing recently are right around number two there anyway, so they're, yeah, they're not owning water or utilities anywhere.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a comment if I could, Mr. Mayor. The beautiful thing about our airport is we have that room. I was in a meeting Thursday night with the Boise Airport Manager, and they're in trouble over there, they are out of space. They're being intruded on by housing and complaints about noise, and that's a gem, it really is, compared to a lot of the other commercial airports around our area.
Yeah, I mean, I've said this before many times in the nearly 20 years I've worked at your airport, but it's a very unique facility that has a lot of of great features. You have rail access, you have interstate access, you have a fully capable runway that basically any airplane in the fleet could land at if it needed to. You have lots of land, lots of apron space, there are lots of benefits to your airport, and generally, great flying weather, instrument runway, all, lots of benefits, so.
Super.
I'd love to see it get used more.
So once we receive FAA approval on it, then you will see it back for final adoption.
Super. Okay, thank you very much. Talking to FAA.
Yeah.
There is a vacancy at the FAA right now? Oh, yeah, for a planner, so I would guess a couple of months, so.
I think that's optimistic, but thank you.
Well, I'm trying to be optimistic. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number six, is city business licensing. Brent McLean, Planning and Development Services Director, will present information including options and estimate estimated costs regarding implementation of a proposed citywide business Thank you.
I know.
Morning, Mayor and Council, Brent McLean, Planning and Development Services Director. Excited to be here with you this morning to talk a little bit about one of your goals. So this is, as I mentioned, one of your short-term goals, number 5B, is a business license ordinance. And as we met as staff and department heads, I drew the short straw and get to 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 take the lead on this, on this goal of yours. And so why are we, why are we pursuing this? And there's a lot of different reasons. Some of them are, there's a lot of unanswered questions with our businesses located within Pocatello. Department heads have questions about what kind of services they're providing, what's located within those buildings, what waste is being put into our sewer systems, what environmental impacts they might be having. So there's a lot of things that we have questions on as regards to to businesses located within the city of Pocatello. And we just want to make sure that they're meeting all of the the federal, state, and local regulations as well. So I called the Department of Labor to find out, how many businesses are located in the city of Pocatello? Right now, they're estimating about 2,242 businesses are located within the city of There, but therein lies another reason to to do the business license program, is the information that we can glean from the Department of Labor is very restricted as to what they can provide to us. So if if we want specific information about the businesses in Pocatello, we have to get that information ourselves. And one of the ways to do that is through this licensing process, where we can require them to fill out an application form, answer questions regarding their operations, and address whatever concerns or needs we have within those operations. So our current licenses, right now, we we do process some licenses, very specialized licenses. They, the City Clerk's Office is responsible for issuing those licenses. Some of those licenses also go through the Police Department, and some of those licenses go through the Building Department. And so the, this slide shows just, just a really broad stroke of of what those those licenses involve currently. And you're familiar with most of those, you see them come to you for appeals and different things of of that nature. We have builder contractor licenses, we have signed contractor licenses, we have stormwater protection licenses through the Building Department. There's other licenses that the Police Department manages for background checks and and different things of that nature, which are a key and vital role to those processes. But a lot of these, so some of these licenses will be associated with the business, and some of them are associated with individuals. They're not necessarily a business entity, like a daycare worker license. That's not a business, it's an individual who's getting a license. So it's a very complex licensing process as we look at, you know, what do we want to do with our licensing? So if we're going to create a citywide licensing program, my recommendation, and in talking with department heads, it was, seemed fairly consistent in our opinions that we need a singular location for the application of all city-issued licenses. So you don't go here for this license, and here for that license, and there for this license, that there's a singular spot that people go to get licenses. Your request was to establish a new general business license. And so one of the things we'll have to look at is, if we do that, how do we incorporate that general business license into the current existing licenses? Those licenses we have now are very specialized, and they have very unique needs, and we need to make sure that we maintain those standards of those licenses. We do have our new community development software, which has a licensing component of, to manage the licensing process. It is being rolled out here in the next couple of months, but it's not beefed up to the scale of what we would need for a citywide business license. That's something we would have to internally create within our our system to include a general business license. We do have, in this new software, all these other specialty licenses are kind of built into it right now, but they would need some tweaking and some modifications to to those, to the system if we decided to go with a general business license as well. So what that would, what would that do for us? It would give us an online portal for people to apply for licenses. It would go to a singular individual or individuals, a group of individuals who would receive those, and then send reviews out to departments that need to review those licenses, whether it's the Police Department, the Fire Department, the wastewater, whoever it is. Those reviews will be sent out to the departments, they can then review those and send those reviews back to the the licensing individuals.
Brent, we've got Josh, Councilmember.
So just to put an example to this process, I'm going out to fill out a business license, there's a dropdown menu or a selection, a question that says, is your business affiliated with childcare? If I select yes, then that process, when that application goes in, is going to get sent to the Police Department, or opens up a second series of questions that I have to get if I'm getting a daycare license, for example.
So it would, it would be its own license, so it would be a dropdown, you'd have a dropdown of license types. Where you'd have a daycare license, or a general business license, or a, what's another one, I'm drawing a blank, a detective license.
Taxi, or whatever.
So you have all those types, and then And then, there'll be unique questions associated with each license type. And each license type will then have specific reviewers assigned to that license. And it will send an email to that individual that they received a review that they need to process. They'll pull up their their access to the the community development software, do the reviews that they need to do, approve or deny or request more information to that to that license. Then it would send an email back to not only the the business license coordinator, but also the applicant of those results. So, there's a lot of just automated email correspondence.
So, if I was doing daycare, I would need to apply for two licenses then?
Well, that's something we've got to figure out. I don't want to do that.
I.
I would want to do a singular license.
Yeah.
For so the licenses we have now that are existing now, I would want to incorporate as a singular license.
Okay.
It'd be essentially be the general business license and their daycare license all roped into one.
Right. Like, there are classifications of business license.
Yes.
And similar, like, if we have a general business license restaurant, right? Like, there may not be any additional criteria, but it's a classification for.
Yeah, we we can give it as fine as we want. Or we can, if we keep it broad and have the the real purpose of this is to get information.
Yeah.
We want to know, you know, how many employees you have there? Do you need a grease trap? Do you need to have or are you storing flammable material? All those things that we have questions about.
Yep.
We we need to make sure we're getting all that information in this process.
Okay. We've got a question. Councilmember Nichols.
Yeah.
So, are you anticipating any type of facility inspections to make sure that they're in full compliance with, you know, egress and?
So, that would be that would be something that I believe the Fire Department would want to probably look at. And you can ask Chief O'Hern that question. But if if there's a specific need that a department wants in relation to an application, you could say, if they say yes, they have flammable material on site, it may trigger an inspection from the Fire Department to go see what they actually have. Or if it's a new business moving into a building, that that an existing building, that may trigger an inspection to make sure that they have all the adequate sprinkler systems or egress, like you mentioned. It may trigger some of those things. But that's those are the details we'll have to work out with each department as we go through this process.
I mean, I'm guessing this would be tied into our existing GIS system so that other departments could log on and see what they're storing, perhaps?
Yeah, so there's there's a number of ways we can utilize this data with GIS. And and I'm glad you said it because that gets to my next point. If we're getting all this information, we need to do it for a reason.
Right.
And we need to be able to provide that highly analytical data to our departments so they can use it the way they need to use it. And GIS is a huge, huge element of that. So, the community development software is based in GIS. It links to addresses. It links to parcels. And so, it could it will provide layers for us that, you know, the Fire Department can could create a layer of all the properties that have flammable material within the city and create a a map that indicates all that information for them that they could pull up. Or if you wanted to know, where do we have all the the daycares? It could link to all those properties that have a daycare license, and you could see where all the daycares are within within the city. So, there's a huge element of of technical information. And the the point of getting this information is to use it. And and so, the the key is that we have individuals in place that can can analyze this data, help us to know how many businesses of a certain type we might have, where are we short? And that's beneficial to the community as well, that if they come to us and they ask, how many car washes are in town? We can tell them, right? Too many, right? But that's that's the information that we can have readily available to them as as we have businesses coming, trying to determine whether or not this is a good location for them or where is there a niche that is is lacking and where's an opportunity? And so, I think this information can be very valuable for that if we do it the right way. If it's just going to be a checkbox, we just want to know what businesses are here, that's not enough to to really do this program. It needs to be deeper than that. This is something that we can use as an economic driving force, too, if we do it the right way.
Councilmember Cheatham.
How would we enforce it?
Okay, I'll get to that.
All right.
So, I did a just a quick search of communities throughout Idaho that for business licenses. Most of the major cities do not have a general business license. They don't do it. Why? Why not? Usually, it's just it takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of investment to do it. They may have some other resources or other means to get the information they're looking at. It is a common practice outside of Idaho. There's a lot of communities that do it. So, but what communities do? Caldwell has one. They have a a new license fee of $121, which is an odd number to me, and then a renewal license of $25. So, the first year, it's 121. Each year after that is 25. Lewiston is is a little out there, too. They have, for new commercial, it's a dollar for the first year. So, they're incentivizing people to sign up that first year with a dollar. But then, after that, it ranges depending on how many employees they have, from $90 to $342 a year, which is is kind of an odd thing to me. I don't get it. Post Falls is just $25 a year for new or renewals, just flat $25 a year. Chubbick is the same way. So, where do we lie? Are we $25? Are we $120 to start and $25 after that? That's what we need to decide if this is something we want to move forward. That fee rate is something that I haven't gotten into great depth as to what is the sweet spot for us. I know our home occupation licenses are $50. But that's just a one-time fee, and then we don't charge an annual fee after that. So, these are things that we just have to really kind of think through. Look at our existing fee schedules and how do those fees affect this whole process?
Council President Lurick.
And for the fees that we charge, all the various different fees in the city, it's we look at what it costs us to run the program or provide the service or whatever, and then the fee has to be based on that. So, are you looking to determine what this whole program would cost and then see?
So, if you wanted it to completely cover, we'll get into the costs of personnel to do this. I don't think you're going to be able to charge a fair fee to cover the entirety of the cost. It will be subsidized by the city in some level. Now, but that's where we we you're right. We don't charge fees more than than what the cost is to administer whatever program that is. And so, but we need to see what that is. Those details, a lot of that depends on the direction you guys give me to move forward. And how in-depth are we getting in this? What are we going to do with this program?
So, there is a chance that it's going to cost us more than we could reasonably charge?
I guarantee you it will.
Okay.
If you want to do it in a way that is useful. If you just are looking to to have like a business registration that you know what businesses are in town, that's not useful information. That doesn't cost very much, but that's not useful information. If you wanted to make this pro this program something that we can actually use for our community to be an economic driver for our community, we need to use this information and have detailed analysis of what data we actually have. And then we can but that's going to cost us because that takes more skill and more time.
Councilmember Mansfield.
And given that that's the case, I, as we look at this, I'm more inclined, whatever number, I mean, I know you're going to look at it, but I'm more inclined towards like the post-falls Chubbick side as opposed to like the Lewiston side in terms of cost just because the point is is that the value that this is designed to bring is one that it may not, you know, it's not going to be recouped just in those fees. It's the economic development around these licenses and the business in Pocatello. And so, I'd rather make it something that is not too cumbersome, both perception-wise as well as in reality for businesses.
And I I agree as well. And and that's where you, as a council, have to understand that if you want to use this information for in-depth analysis, you're going to subsidize subsidize that that cost.
Mr. Mayor. Yes.
To me, the Caldwell plan, where the initial year, you've got a lot of research and things that need to be done to set this up, but a very simple renewal makes more sense to me, sort of an initiation fee to get it going. And then it's and then it's inexpensive to renew and and monitor and track because you're not doing a lot of keep much. You're not doing a lot of form filling and reviewing and all that thing.
Yeah, the renewal is mostly making sure that it's maintained. What you had prior is still there.
Yeah, you know, one of the one of the concerns that's come up over the years as I've served on council is police find an open door and don't know who to call. So, a car sits there all night, or we have a fire come up and we don't know who to contact.
Yep.
And to me, maintaining phone numbers and email addresses and text messaging and those kind of instantaneous contacts makes this very valuable for our various departments in the city.
And just to add to that, in addition to knowing who to call and what the contact is, also knowing what they're going into. If there's a fire and there's some really dangerous material or explosive or flammable, and they don't know what they're going into, there's a serious safety concern there.
Absolutely. So, a little bit of how do we facilitate this process? First, we need to do some public outreach. We need to create some messaging. We need to get the word out. I'll guarantee you the business community is not going to like it. They're not going to because it's the government managing what they do more. They're not going to like it. We have our reasons for it, and that's what we need to message. We need to have a good message as we move forward with this process. That initial intake is going to take a long time. Over 2,000 businesses are going to have to sign up for the first time, plus any new business that comes into town in that first year. That initial startup is going to be arduous and it's going to be very difficult. And it will be a continuing rolling thing that that we will have to constantly maintain. You're going to have application reviews, departmental reviews of those applications, and then we can issue licenses. And then, after we issue those licenses, we have this umbrella of data analysis that we need to actually take these these this number and this information we get and use it. So, it's not just sitting there as worthless information. We actually need to use it. This is the hard slide. We don't have staffing for this. I don't have personnel to do this. We don't have people to to do the outreach. We don't have people to do the messaging that needs to happen with this. We don't have people to do the application reviews. The departments have some staff in place that are currently doing these reviews. But I don't have anyone to issue licenses. And I don't have anyone to do that data analysis. These positions and this information, we can't cover. So, trying to look at how do we approach this in a as conservative as a way as possible, I anticipate at least two two full-time positions. One would be a business license coordinator. And in talking with Heather in HR about that, we're looking at the 79,000 to 89,000 with benefits for that position. And then a second would be a lower-grade position, a business license clerk, which would be approximately 50,000. Now, this is very conservative. I don't know where we're going to end up once we get into it. I've never had to manage a business license program, and it's it's a large undertaking. But that also means two new workstations. So, I need computers. I need phones. I need desks. I don't have space to put them. I don't know where in my office I'm going to put these people. I also have software subscriptions that I have to to cover cost of. So, there's a lot of startup costs that we're going to have to figure out if we decide to go this route. So, what does this equate to? We're looking at 83,000 to 90,000 or 83,000 to 94,000 for the business license coordinator and 54,000 to 55,000 for that clerk. That's just a very, very conservative estimate. The good thing is we already have community development. That software is in place. We're just going to have to spend a lot of time reprogramming and creating the information we need in that. So, that's going to be something that I think we can do in-house. I I think we have the capabilities to do that in-house, but it's going to be a workload to get it going. Any questions for me?
I sense a certain reluctance.
There is a certain reluctance, and I think there's a reason why, if you look across the state, most of the major cities do not do this. They do not do this because it's a very large undertaking. It's not a simple thing. And I if we do this, we will be the largest city in the state that does it. Most of the other cities that do it are smaller cities that don't have as much happening. So, there is a certain level of reluctance, and it's all. Is the information important? I think it is. There's a lot of information I would like to have so I could go out and and do my job as in economic development, to do my job in planning that I don't have, that I try to get from the Department of Labor, but they're like, well, I can tell you who's allowed us to share the information. That doesn't help me because I don't have the full picture. So, is it valuable? There's definitely value in it, but it is an undertaking. And I just want you guys to have a clear picture of that. And I'm in a bit of a mood today, so I'm sorry.
I'm sure if I could follow up.
Okay.
Do you anticipate that this would be transparent to the public like the Transparent Idaho site that the Controller's Office has so that someone could go in and research these things on their own once the database is built?
I would have to talk with legal about that. I don't know what legal ramifications there are in having it completely transparent. There may be information that we can make available, but it may be that we have to keep some of that information not transparent. I don't know that answer for sure. That's a good question.
Okay, I've got Council President Delurick, then Councilmember Paulson, and then Councilmember Nichols.
I'm hearing your concerns, and I think they're very valid. And as you said, there's a reason larger cities in the state are not doing this. But at the same time, we're also all agreeing that there's important information that we need to have. And so, you know, to sort of build on Rick's point about your reluctance and for all the reasons that you've stated, is there some other thing we could do rather than going to this sort of full-fledged program? Is there another way to get that critical information that we need for contact purposes, for safety purposes? for safety purposes, that doesn't go into the depth that this does? And would that even be worth?
Yeah, I, I think there's avenues that you could get maybe portions of the information, but not all of it. I think if, for the amount and the breadth of information that we're looking for, I don't know of any other option. Now, this is not a odd thing outside of Idaho. You go to other states and you see this all over the place, and businesses that come here from outside of the state are surprised that we don't have this.
Right.
And so, but they're surprised we don't have impact fees, too. So, you know, there, there's a lot of things that we are behind in when it comes to the national trend. And that may warrant moving forward, you know? I just wanted you guys to have your eyes wide open with it.
Okay, Councilmember Paulson.
So I know Chubbick is smaller, but do you know how their implementation of it went?
I can talk with, with them on that a little bit further. They've been doing it for a number of years. Once you get it going, it's a lot easier. The hard thing is to capture all of the businesses coming into town, that they know when they come here that they have to come to the city and get a business license. That's the hardest part, and that messaging is going to be the hardest part. And we need to rely on our community partners, the Chamber and other organizations that work with businesses, so that they know they need to come to the city to get, obtain this license. But I can find out more information about their implementation process.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yeah, just, I just, I don't really have a question. I just did some quick arithmetic here. So if we had 2,242 existing businesses, a 25 bucks a year is $56,000 a year. So based on that scenario, we might be able to pay for the clerk.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, Mansfield.
I, I want to just express again, I think, my support. And when I think about all the ways and all the things that are affected by this, that could be driven by this data, you think of developers and businesses who are coming in, as was mentioned, you think of tourism and, and people who are just visiting. I think of things like rate studies and capital improvement projects for wastewater and water infrastructure in the city. We've talked about emergency services, but I think you also have to look at things like traffic patterns, choosing, investing in like where you put traffic lights and signals. This data could significantly change, and, and I think would be the data that every single department will look at when they are applying for grants and making long-term projections and planning decisions around the city of Pocatello. And I just think that's invaluable.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Well, I, I think the one advantage we have is utility billing. Everybody, every new business who comes to town is going to be a utility billing hookup of some kind, and I think that's, that's a starting point to, to initiate this process. So I, you know, I think it will take time. It'll take a year or two to get this thing up to full speed and get it going. But after that, the, the new businesses, I think it'd be easy to capture. The hard part's going to be capturing the existing businesses that we don't even know exists in whatever building.
Yeah.
And, and that's going to be a lot of the work of, of these individuals is to try to identify those businesses, where are they located, and to reach out to them to let them know that they have to apply for a city business license. And one thing that I do want to note, too, with this information, it is very heavy GIS backed. And so you're probably going to impact the GIS department substantially, and they're going to need more help. And Jeff's not here to defend that, but...
Now's the time to strike, then.
But I know, I know that their department is, is understaffed, and we are very, very under utilizing the capabilities of GIS in this city, and we're missing the boat. And if you guys look at GIS departments throughout the state and throughout the country, we are very, very understaffed, and we're not using it to its full potential. There's so much analytical capabilities in GIS that we are missing. We're not doing any of it. And that's a plug for Jeff.
It's nice of you. Anything else, counsel?
Yes.
Council President.
I was just sort of, I was going to say thinking out loud, well, I haven't thought out loud yet, but, I mean, I hear everything you're saying about what a huge undertaking this is. I'm also, I, very similar position to what Councilmember Mansfield has been saying, you know? And, and we've all talked about the need for this information. So it's going to come down to, this is going to be a huge commitment, and we have to decide whether we're, whether we're committed to, to going down this road and whether we're committed to putting the resources towards it that that will take. I think it is an opportunity with the GIS to really utilize GIS in a, in a way that we're not doing right now. And I would, I would like to see that happen, too. So I, I've, I think there's good reason to do this, but it, we have to understand what a huge commitment this is, and are we, are we prepared and, and able to?
Yeah.
To do this.
I'm, I'm being conservative on those two people. It may need more once we get into it, and I will, if you decide to go there, I will tell you if we need more.
And I don't want to underestimate the need for GIS support. So the two people would be the two people directly administering this, but it's really, the need is more than that.
Absolutely, it is.
Councilmember Cheetham.
Well, I think the right guy drew the short straw. I guess now my question for you with all the work you've done already, Brent, is what's the next step? If this council indicates we want to move forward, where do we go from here?
If you want to move forward, we need to go through and finalize those job positions and get them ready. I can't get moving forward with anything without those people. I can start laying the groundwork of what it's going to look like, but I need people to be able to implement it. I need to have people in, in place to re, redevelop our community development software and include all this. And I need to sit down with all the department heads and talk about what information they need, and how are we going to structure the existing licenses, and who's going to do what, and really delineate those lines and that line of communication. So there's a lot of, of just background structure that we need to have in place, but I need people that boots on the grounds to be able to get stuff done if we want to move forward with it. So I'm not going to be able to really get something done until that happens.
To follow up.
Yeah.
I think we need to pick an implementation date, prepare an ordinance, if, if making an effective date for this kind of licensing, and move toward a specificity about what we're going to do and how we're going to do it.
Absolutely.
Whether it's beginning of this next fiscal year.
That'd be too soon.
January 1.
January 1 is going to be a push.
Yeah.
You said, also that you don't have the space right now.
I don't. I don't have office space.
Even if we...
I have to find a, a location to put these people.
If we approve them, that's sort of theoretical, like where would they go?
Go to the financial area.
We, we'll have to figure that out. They're not going to be probably in my vicinity.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just as an informal survey, I would like to see this happen.
Okay.
I'd like to see us move forward.
All right.
I would, too. I'm...
Seeing heads nod, so...
But I want to know what that, what that really involves.
I, I saw some heads nodding. I saw some, um, heads nodding that were kind of cautiously nodding. That being said, we will move forward with it, counsel. We will take a look at it, and we'll be back in front of you again with more, more, what it's going to cost. We'll get these positions sent out and, and what it's going to cost and what it, what it looks like. Maybe where we can put people in City Hall, and might have a tent out front here for them. Somewhere, we'll figure it out. We'll get some internet out in that tent, and they'll be fine.
Can I just ask a sort of logistical question? We're about to start, you know, our budget development. We're talking about two positions.
I think we heard loud and clear, this year is not, is a hard, hard push, and so I think it would...
So we need to look at building those into the budget and whether, what other positions we need, and whether that's even possible?
By the time we get to the budgeting process, we'll have an answer to, do we need to put them in now or, or wait? How does that sound?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Super. Okay, we have our marching orders, kind of.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, let's go ahead and take a break for a few minutes, and then we'll be back to discuss the South Fifth Annexation. Item number seven is the South Fifth Avenue Corridor Annexation. Planning and Development Services staff will present information regarding a proposed city initiated, initiated annexation along the South Fifth Avenue Corridor.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jim Engelsi, Long Range Planner for the city. Brent McLean, Planning Director, is also here. We just wanted to provide an update and field any questions that you may have on our proposed South Fifth Annexation. We have come before you before on this issue, and so before we enter the public hearing phase of this, we just want to make sure that we're all on the same page and that we can answer any of your questions that you may have. This first slide shows the area that we're proposing to be annexed, with the exception of one parcel. We heard from the property owner here, it's requesting not to be, and that won't affect the, the proposed annexation. They're not hooked up to utilities, and it's the same owner of most of these that are, will be enclaved as well. And so we don't see an issue with that. And so this is the total area, about 500 acres proposed, 156 parcels. I did give, have provided a breakdown of acreage and parcels that have provided consent.
So Jim, before you go any further here, I just want to make sure the council is clear on what we're talking about. The pink line is the existing city of Pocatello boundaries, is that correct?
Correct.
Right there where your hand, little hand was right there was I-15?
Yep.
Right there? And the dark line, the black line outlining the, if you go, what is that, southeast right here? That is the annexation area that you're talking about, is that correct?
Correct.
So if it's grayed out, it's not getting annexed in?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So this area here is what we're talking about, and then a small area here. This area is already in the city, and then the city, of course, up here.
Okay. Do you have, very quickly, the jail? That's that property right there, okay? Because it's county, it's not going to do us any good. In fact, it would cost us more. Anytime something happened, our police department would have to respond to the jail, opposed to the county if we had that, so that's good. We do not want that annexed in.
His hand was up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Maybe you're going to get to it. No consent, does that, does that mean landowners who have explicitly said that they do not consent to be annexed? Or does this include like non-responses?
Non-responsive.
So, majority of those 69 parcels, how many of those were non-responses?
All non-responsive.
Great.
The ones that did respond, we, we...
We did exclude.
Chose not to.
Okay, okay.
Include them. Because we were able to still wrap around and get all the ones that are connected to city utilities. There's one reason why we chose not to annex them.
Okay.
You know, if we had properties that would, would make it so that we couldn't reach all the ones we need to reach, we'd have to have a bigger conversation with the, with the owner. But these ones were, were simple, we can still get around them.
Okay.
And be fine.
Councilmember Cheetham.
Mr. Mayor, Jim, you're, you're 67%. Is that percent of parcels or percent of acreage?
Acreage.
What about consent of parcels?
So the parcels, I could, we could probably do the math here, but total is 156, and then those that have consented is 80...
55.7.
55.7.
Of parcels.
You know, and my, my concern here is the foolishness of 1293 as amended that the governor signed yesterday. This is exactly what we were trying to stop, is back from taking force and preventing these kind of annexations.
Correct. The, the good thing is we're on track to complete this prior to that enactment.
Good.
So, was there any other questions from the council? So, it's interesting, we've got people, or landowners, that have buildings in these areas. I assume they fall under the, the North Manette County Fire District, where they're, where we've been forced into this weird position that we're in. I'm personally not interested in going and protecting their properties for fire and things like that, where they're not paying for it. I'm not that interested in giving them police support where they're not paying for that. That would all be a county, and, and I'm assuming these landowners understand, know and understand that. I would be very interested in our fire department going and protecting the structures that are in the city limits from catching fire or something, but it's kind of a one-sided thing, but we've kind of been forced into that with this bill that we've had as well. So I want to be pretty clear moving forward, and it doesn't, don't want to make it sound inhumane, but it's kind of a pay-to-play thing at, at this point, and, and I, I, I think it's important for these people. I know there, there's one parcel there that has some big events at it, and you could have a major situation and issue, and it takes quite a while for the volunteer districts to get ramped up and over there, but, you know, and the same thing with police, though it's very, it's right next door to the jail area, there's a major problem. It takes a minute for the sheriff's department to get people over there. So I hope these homeowner, these landowners know and understand that the real consequence of not being a part of and into the city limits. So has that been clear?
They've, we've, we've, we've told them that, as far as my understanding, and Merrill has talked to them mostly, but they have emphatically said they do not want to be annexed.
Okay.
Most of the properties that are being excluded are a single entity.
Yeah.
There's a single property owner who's just chosen not to do it.
Yeah.
With most of them that are, so...
Well, I understand that, but I think it puts some people at risk, possibly. Councilmember Cheetham.
You know, and on those lines, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to take a hard line. You and I both have shared a story of a, a property owner on the other side of the state whose city and fire departments have told him they will not respond anymore because he sits on the border and he's been utilizing city services, and they will not do it anymore. And I think we have to do that and make a point. We've got to draw the line.
I think, I think that line's going to have to be drawn, and I hate to do it, but I agree.
I agree.
I agree, so... That's what makes these annexations so hard, when you leave enclaves and you leave parcels out and stuff like that, so...
Yep.
Anyway, okay. I, I need to get off my soapbox on that, so... Go ahead.
Um, so this, this slide is just showing the breakdown of who's consented. Um, we have 84 parcels that are hooked up to either sewer or water. Um, and they have, they'll be providing implied consent because they are connected. And then the 69 parcels that are, uh, have not responded or have not provided written consent.
I, I do have a quick question on that. Yeah. If any of these parcels end up being, uh, needing and to be hooked up to water and sewer or water or sewer, at that point they will need to be annexed into the city. Is that correct?
The ones that are not included?
Yes.
Yes. So, um, if, if they want to be hooked up to city services, I, we, it's up to the council ultimately if you want to provide those services without annexation. But my recommendation is you require the annexation at the time of, of hookup to, to services.
Okay. Thank you. Rick?
Well, during debate on 1293, one of the issues that came up was a community that annexed and then required sidewalks and driveways and all kinds of infrastructure improvements, demands on those property owners immediately. Are, do we do anything like that? Is, to me, that's a separate issue.
No, we don't do anything like that. So these properties, until they go to redevelop, we don't require them to come to standards. So they come in as they are, and when they want to develop their property or redevelop their property, that's when they have to, uh, bring them into city standards.
Good.
Or if they have to replace a septic system or a sewer line or something like that, at that time, they would have to bring that element into city standards.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, those property owners that, that don't want to participate at this point, and we're saying if at some point they want to, you know, have water, sewer, um, that we would require them to annex into the city or be annexed, um, what does 1293 do to, to their ability to do this later on?
It doesn't do anything to their ability to do it. If, if they want to on their own be annexed, they, they could. Now, I'll have to say with the new 1293, they will be enclaved on all four sides. And so that actually gives us as a city more ability to force annex them in the future.
Okay.
Because it eliminates the five acre rule that currently is in place, that if it's over five acres, we cannot force them to annex. That goes away, which is an advantage with this new legislation. Um, so all of these enclaves would be eligible for us to force annex if we choose to do it.
Okay.
Because there's no size restriction on it.
Okay. Let's move it.
Yeah. Um, just further breakdown, um, we, we met with, uh, Streets and Sanitation, uh, Police and Fire, um, to, um, talk about any of the concerns that they had moving forward this annexation and providing, um, services. Um, and if you have any questions for them, they're, they are all here still. Um, and so they, they could voice their, their concerns if you, if you would like to hear that from them. Um, but this is kind of the breakdown that we gave them. Um, these are all approximate numbers. Um, but, uh, your population you'll be adding won't be significant right now. We do have some development pressures down there of, of a couple housing developments going up, which will, um, get pretty close to doubling that amount of both housing units and population. Um, and we, we foresee, we have talked to other owners that, that desire to have, to add additional units in existing residential developments down there. Um, and so we could experience some significant growth in that area. Um, unsure if, if most of those plans will come into fruition, but there are currently, um, developments in process, both residential and industrial. Um, and so, and then based off of the, the current assessments and current development as is, uh, we'd be bringing in about 340,000. Uh, that does not include in, in proposed or in progress developments or obviously increased rates, um, in the future.
And, and I want to be clear with that. That's not the motivation to this annexation. The motivation is this is an area that we're seeing development pressures and it is within the city area of impact. And we want it to be developed the way the city wants it to be developed, not the way the county develops. And, um, this is a, a very vital corridor for our city that we want to have control over. That currently, a lot of things happen down there that we just shake our heads and we have no authority and no ability to control what's happening. Um, and so I, I just want to make sure that that's clear, that, that the tax generation, that is not going to cover our expenses to, to bring this area in. Um, that's not our motivation. Our motivation is we recognize the importance of this area and we want to be able to control how it develops.
Well, and one other thing was the safety of our water and, uh, stuff. That was, uh, I think the motivator that really got this moving a few years ago was
Correct.
That this area has been identified as what is, uh, a, a major pollutant to our groundwater and our, our drinking water. And so it's a matter of, it, it affects more than just that south end of town. I think it affects 60,000 people that live here. So.
Yeah. All of us.
Yeah.
One of the things that, um, you'll see during the public hearing process, we're gonna be doing a concurrent, um, comprehensive plan map amendment at the same time. Um, we, we have areas on there that were designated, um, one way, but, uh, current development is going another route. Um, and I can, I can kind of share with you, uh, some of those areas, um, just to give you, give you an idea. Right? Um, when we did the comprehensive plan map, we did this broad stroke of splitting, uh, industrial and mixed use with South Fifth right here. Um, and then residential up above. Um, what you see here is just a mix of uses on both sides of South Fifth. Um, and so for one example, um, we have this area, this is Piedmont here and South Fifth. You've got, uh, the Mobile Home Park here. Um, this area is currently being developed with industrial uses. And we don't have it designated right on our, our future land use map. This map is what we use to, to determine what zoning is appropriate and what isn't. Right now, this is all industrial as well. And so we're, we're looking at, uh, one, for example, this area switching to an industrial, a light industrial, uh, zoning. And then this area where all this residential is at, kind of just essentially flip-flopping those two, um, and making this more of a mixed use area. Um, we, we hear from this property owner that they want to add apartment units. Um, and so we want to respond appropriately to that desire. Um, and then make, trying to reduce the, the amount of non-conformities as well is, is another hope, um, in this future land use map change. Um, and that goes for also, uh, these homes that were built next to the PRT, uh, current, currently designated as industrial. Um, but we, our goal is not to create non-conformities that we don't have to. And uses from here down, um, essentially to the Peterbilt here, we're looking at, um, switching to a mixed use scenario. And then you'll have areas like this be light industrial and this area be light industrial. Um, and so we want to respond to what's there and what, what proposals that property owners have, um, uh, to kind of fit what's going on, um, and reduce that level of non-conformity. We don't see a significant, um, disruption on, uh, how we foresee future land use by, by doing that. Um, but you will see a, a reduction in the amount of industrial land that we had, had designated. But as currently used, it is residential and we don't see that changing anytime soon.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This are, this land you're talking about, the pink and the blue, that's currently all county.
Correct.
So the zoning you're talking about is county zoning, not city?
I'm, I'm talking about when we annex.
Right.
It, it will be industrial or mixed use. Um.
So what we're doing is, when we originally did this section of town, it was a pretty broad stroke. Um, we're trying to get into the weeds a little bit more of it.
Fine tune.
Fine tune what, what is actually there? What is its potential to redevelop? And, um, what do we foresee being there? And some of those areas are new residential developments or in process of creating new residential developments in the county that aren't going to switch to industrial. So why would we zone them something that makes them non-conforming? Cause in our lifetimes, they will never be anything different. So let's embrace it with what's there and conform in, in how we want it to, to develop based off of what's there to further, um, encourage what, what's happening in that area. So that area that Jim mentioned from, uh, just north of PRT down to Peterbilt, that is, everything except for PRT is really going towards a higher density residential use along that, that section of the roadway. And on the other side of the road where we had our mixed use designation, that's kind of developed into a little industrial park, um, that is new development. And so that's never going to change in our lifetimes from industrial at this point. So why are we kicking against the pricks and, and, and we need to embrace what that is and work with what is there and work with those existing conditions as much as we can. Now, is that ideal there? I would rather that been something different than industrial right there, but that's what's there. So we have to deal with what's there.
But, but the zoning designations currently, our county designation is not city.
The county has a zoning designation. We have a future land use designation. So when they get annexed, we rezon them to a city zone.
Right.
And, but that has to match our, our future land use map. So there's that blending and jiving of those two maps.
Good.
Any questions the council may have? This, um, is the end of our presentation unless you have any other questions.
Time table.
So July 1st is the effective date. This will be done before that?
Yep. We're going to Planning and Zoning, May 1st, and then you'll be seeing us at council on May 16th. And then it'll be in ordinance and read in the June meeting, first June meeting.
And, and, uh, June, we won't have a second meeting, uh, because of the AAC conference. And so, uh, in a perfect world, these dates line up. If they don't line up, then council be prepared to have a, a special meeting to take care of this, uh, in June. And so.
Um, are there any other annexations that we're looking at, that we need to look at or should be looking at before the July 1? Mark?
Um, we don't have time to.
Okay.
But I don't think so. This is the, this is the major one that we
I knew, yeah, we've been talking about this one for a couple, for years. So.
The rest of them, I think we can, we can make happen in other ways. So.
Okay. All right. Super. Thank you. Then we will move to agenda item number eight is the Pocatello Downtown Historic District Design Standards. Planning and Development Services Department staff members and consultant Kirk Huffaker will present an update to the council regarding a draft to the updated downtown historic district design standards.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jim Engels, Long Range Planner. And I have with me Kirk Huffaker, um, who's our consultant, uh, leading the charge on, um, updating our downtown design standards. And I will let him take it away and I'll be here for any questions.
Uh, thank you, Jim. Uh, good morning, Honorable Mayor and council members. Uh, thank you for your leadership here in Pocatello. It's the first time I'm meeting with you all. Um, though I've been working here in Pocatello as a consultant, um, with, uh, Jim and the staff and the Historic Preservation Commission for about a year. So, um, thank you for the time on the agenda to present this, um, as it's been in the works for quite a while. So, um, yeah, I'll run through a summary of the, uh, design standards, uh, where we're at about a 90% draft stage at this point. Um, so still room for flexibility and changing things. Um, but, uh, you know, I, I mainly guided the Historic Preservation Commission. They're really the leaders. Um, they're your local leaders in historic preservation. And, um, it was, it's been a pleasure to work with them. So, uh, just as, as a quick summary, um, the goal of this project was to take the old design guidelines and, uh, change that into what we're calling now design standards, um, that really reflect the evolving needs of the community in the downtown. Um, to, uh, allow for creative, uh, new business and promotion in the historic downtown, but also retain the charm and unique architectural character that is, uh, old Pocatello. And so, uh, as you can see, um, you know, we're right in the, the sort of heart of the top project timeline. Um, and so this is why you're seeing this at this point. And so we're here today, um, really for these reasons, uh, provide a summary, um, of the work that we've done with Historic Preservation Commission, answer any questions you have as of now, um, and receive feedback. Um, you know, this being the first and, and in-person opportunity to do that, but certainly we have more time to receive your feedback, um, as the, uh, final draft is created. Just as a reminder, uh, where the historic district is, I know these streets are not labeled, but, um, it's this sort of bifurcated area that's linked by the, uh, underpass, uh, below the railroad, um, on both the east and west sides. Um, so the little, uh, small area, uh, on the east side, um, of town is connected, uh, to the greater part, uh, where the majority of the buildings are.
Kirk, before you move forward there, is this the business district boundaries? Because for some reason I thought the historic district on the east side of the tracks actually followed a little bit further south and, and actually even a little bit further north.
Yeah, uh, the two boundaries don't quite line up.
Yeah.
They're pretty close, but they don't quite line up. But, um, this one is the historic district.
Okay.
Yep.
So is the, um, is the BID larger?
No, it's smaller than this.
Smaller?
Smaller.
Okay.
It's smaller than this. I thought for some reason it went to the south to about Terry Street, but.
You're probably thinking of the warehouse district. Um, that one is not local, a local district. It's just a national registered district.
Okay.
This is our only local district.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So I wanted to start by just talking a little bit about our public engagement process. Um, we wanted to make sure that people were well aware that these design guidelines, uh, were being revised and collect their input. Um, so our first effort, um, was back early in the project. Um, and it was really the longest, uh, survey that we did, um, as part of public engagement. Um, and it was open for a month. Uh, we received, I think, a, a really good response, uh, from the community. Uh, the questions on the survey were very broad. Um, so it brought in people of, of, I think, a real diversity across the geography of the whole city. Um, it wasn't really just aimed at business owners or property owners downtown. It wasn't really just aimed at business owners or property owners downtown in the historic district. But what we did was, throughout the survey, the questions got more and more specific, to the point that really the questions that were being answered at the end of the survey were by business and property owners. So we could get much more specific about what they felt like their needs were in the revision of this document. The second effort was just a little while ago, on March 1st. We held an open house in conjunction with the release of the first public draft. And so people had had a chance the week prior to flip through it. I could definitely tell, as people came up to me and talked, that they had read it, because they were able to be very specific about their comments, which is appreciated. I mean, you know, what we want is people to read it. And so we had 32 responses, both in person and through a survey, that was open for a couple of weeks to the draft. I don't think, have you heard from anybody else after that?
No.
Okay. So we got some good feedback from that. There was a lot of discussion on social media where this had been posted. It was not super helpful, I mean, to me as a consultant in making revisions to the draft, but it engaged people. And so certainly appreciate the city's communication staff being able to get these things out there and get people knowledgeable about what we're doing. Here's a few comments, just in terms of long-form feedback that we got from the first survey. To me, this is the type of helpful information that I need as a consultant, that can get pretty specific about what people are looking for in revisions. And, you know, this idea that, of course, we want to be equitable in the application of standards. We want to treat all property owners fairly, have a process that's consistent, that's consistent between staff and Historic Preservation Commission, in what they're telling people and how that's applied. And so that's really the goal of the standards as well, is to bring that, where the design guidelines previously, there is a lot more gray area. This is trying to be much more black and white about decision-making. So they know, okay, this is what I can expect from staff, this is what I can expect when I go to the commission level, and here's my next steps if I don't agree with one of those levels. So in terms of document structure, if you've read through it, this is a pretty typical design standards structure in terms of how you lay it out. Sort of goes from this big, broad description of the district, the purpose of historic preservation, the principles and benefits of it, and then getting much more specific as you go through the document, and then into the standards themselves. So there's a little bit of something for everybody, like if you just want to know the general history of the district, there's a short summary of that. But then if you really want to know, like, okay, well, what can I expect when I want to go apply for a new awning? Okay, well, you know, here's the standard, here's the goal of what we're trying to do, and here's how we're describing what's appropriate and what's not. So I'll get into that here. So under each design standard, so for example, awnings, you describe, you know, what an awning is, what the purpose historically is, what it is today, recite the applicable city code, as well as the national standard from the Secretary of Interior standards. So they know what we're looking for in terms of general design, and then what is appropriate in terms of the design of that awning and what's not appropriate. And then there's reference information under each design standard, if they're looking for more information, to describe in greater detail what may be considered appropriate. And so we're trying to be really specific, have it all in one place, so that when an application comes in, it comes to staff, they can just go to one place in the document and say, okay, here's all my relevant information to make a decision, you know, here's what I can decide, or if this needs to go to Historic Preservation Commission, here's all of the applicable information. And same with a business owner. They can pick up the design standards and in one place, see all of the relevant information. These are the 10 design standards that we specifically talk about in the document. I'm not going to go through all of that in great detail, in terms of what's appropriate and what's not. But it's certainly deeper than the design guidelines were. The design guidelines did not really talk in terms of these standards. It was more general, in terms of, say, what is appropriate or not, or maybe they don't even use those words. Sometimes they use other words. And so, in terms of the exterior, you know, what might be expected. And so this is much more specific in terms of each one of these.
I think we have a question, but Councilmember Nichols.
Sure.
Oh, I can wait, Mayor, I have a...
Okay, we'll wait for a minute.
Okay. I have just a couple more slides.
He'll be the first question out of the box.
I have just a couple more slides. Here's a list of the changes, really, the major changes between the versions. And it's certainly much more graphic in terms of the graphics to illustrate each standard, but also a flow chart to more physically describe the certificate of appropriateness process. In the design guidelines previously, it was a three-step bubble, which it's much more complicated than just three steps. And so we wanted to illustrate that, as well as talk about it in narrative. So as I explained, there are design elements now, rather than the five sort of broad goals. There is a much greater explanation of who the Historic Preservation Commission is, what their responsibility is, and then the process of design review. Because as you know, the ordinance has changed recently, there's now administrative approval, so we've added extra steps in there. So we had to go back and explain all of that in this version. The character-defining features of downtown, there's a new section on that. So we're trying to give people more of the terminology about how, what a building looks like, what the different pieces are called architecturally, and then those are further described in a glossary that is much longer. That glossary has also been double-checked to make sure it's consistent across other plans, so that we're using the same language across the board in planning. And then, as I mentioned, consistency in language and terminology throughout the whole document, so we're not changing up that language. And then, let's see. Oh, and then the last point on the right side there, the information you see in the draft here is really just in draft form. This will be transitioned into a graphically designed document, that will be the final and public document. But we want to make sure that we're probably 95% of the way there before we start to design that. So that really, that final product is the final step in this whole process.
Okay.
All right.
That's it.
Councilmember Nichols.
So happy to take questions. I'm happy to go back to other slides if you want as well.
Okay, we've got Councilmember Nichols and then Council President Lyric.
All right. So I have a number of questions.
Sure.
Just wanted to confirm, the design standards only apply to the exteriors of buildings, not the interiors, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, do the design standards align with the Secretary of Interior Standards for historic preservation?
They do.
So if somebody wanted to, say, renovate a building, do a tax credit project, this is going to be in alignment together?
Correct, yes. We hope to encourage that sort of work, you know, to the level of getting a tax credit.
Right, right. Okay, perfect. So how would these changes apply to the building of a new building in the historic district?
Yes. There is a new section on new construction in the historic district, where it's talking about, it's not prescribing a certain look, okay? We don't want to do that. We want to ensure that you keep consistency in terms of setback and scale and mass, so that the rhythm of the street is consistent, and then even if you have a new building, that is retained. But you don't want to prescribe what that exactly looks like. And so, in my view, you want the downtown to evolve in terms of its architecture, you want new buildings to be a product of their time, is how we talk about it, and reflect new architecture, and let that come into the district, but still fit in, in terms of its placement and its scale, its rhythm, its, you know, front doors, its access. You don't want, you know, what you don't want is a big, new building out of scale, set further back from the sidewalk than historically they have been, and an entrance around the back, you know, because all these entrances are right from the street. And so it gives room for flexibility, but enough direction to keep it consistent.
Right, and a certificate of appropriateness would be required for new construction?
For new construction, yes.
Okay. And then talk to me a little about how this would apply to, say, an existing, more modern type of building without much of any historic character to it, if they wanted to do a renovation or...
Sure. So we would call that a nonhistoric building in the historic district. And, you know, that's sort of the gray area in between, sort of the brand-new and the very distinctive old, where we don't want them to do something that would continue, that would continue a history of being nonhistoric. But look for opportunities to, say, if they're going to enlarge the building, bring that back into more of the character of the district. We want to look for those opportunities. It's certainly not forcing them to do that, but if there is an opportunity to talk about options and creative ways to take a building that's not historic and bring it back into something closer to the architectural character of the district, it gives room to do that.
Can I add an example?
Yeah.
One example, since I've been here, is the block building where Five Star Property Management is. That one is a classic mid-century commercial building. And prior, they had awnings that did not fit the style of the building. And when Five Star came in, they did enough to change the awnings to more of, to complement the architecture of the building. And so I would say that that would be appropriate for that building. It's not, they didn't convert it to something that would have been produced at the turn of the century, rather they complemented the style of the architecture of the building. And I think that that would be more than appropriate in our proposed standards.
Yeah. That's all I had, thank you very much.
Council President Lyric?
I really appreciate these explanations and examples, because I think one thing that people that don't come from an architectural background or a historic preservation background struggle with is sort of how you go about, whether it's new construction, or an addition, or signage, awnings, you know, how you go about doing those things, and that it is not about trying to copy the past and, you know, sort of reproduce that. It is about complementing it. You can never copy it. You can never build a new addition that's going to match exactly the old architecture. So you don't try to, you try to do something that's different, but that complements it and works with it. And so whether, as I said, whether we're talking about additions or new construction, or even awnings, you know, I love the block building, because the way that that building was treated was very appropriate for that architecture, but it's not trying to take it back to a particular period where you say, everything in the historic district has to look like it's, you know, a certain time in the 19th century. So I really appreciate these explanations that make it clearer for people to understand what we're trying to accomplish. The other part I wanted to comment on, and I don't really have a question, but I love the clarity and specificity that you're putting into these standards. I think the issues we've had in the past have come from sort of a lack of clarity and therefore a lack of understanding, whether it was the people on the HPC or the people coming before the HPC. Everybody was trying to do their best, but they didn't always know sort of how to do it. So the more clarity we can have, the better it is for everybody. And it's interesting and sort of a little ironic that the clarity and specificity actually will sort of broaden the possibilities and what people will do, rather than narrowing it. If you have a better understanding of what's possible and what's appropriate, I think it sort of expands the possibilities. So I really appreciate the work that's gone into this, and I think it will help us maintain that historic district in a better way, and help the Historic Preservation Commission work with our staff, work with property owners, business owners, in a more productive way. So, thank you.
If I could speak to that, would that be okay?
Sure.
I mean, as an architectural historian, I mean, I'm really impressed with the uniqueness of downtown Pocatello. And a resource like that just takes a little bit of extra stewardship to guide it in the right direction. It doesn't take a heavy hand, just a little bit extra, and that's what we're hoping to do here. And, you know, to say, there is more specificity, but there's not just one way to do it. We're not telling you, this is the only way you can do this. There's still a lot of room for creativity, and, you know, we're sort of nudging them in that direction. And, you know, having administrative approval and a really good staff person is crucial in making this all happen. And so I think you're positioned to sort of do this right.
Yep.
And then I just wanted to point out the irony of exterior standards coming from the Department of the Interior, but anyway.
I like that.
The historic preservation joke is what that was.
I've never heard that one before.
I'm an architectural historian, too.
Councilmember Cheatham, if you can follow that, knock yourself out.
Let me go a different direction.
There you go, okay.
You know, I think a better example of a newer building is the Caribou Jacks Building, you know, the building that was there burned 50 years ago and was rebuilt as a financial institution. Now it's a hardware store, it reflects nothing of the historic character of downtown, but instead I think it contrasts very nicely with that building next to it, that is the oldest continuous-built wooden structure in Pocatello, the skateboard shop. I see nothing wrong with that. I don't see a problem with that kind of renovation, when you go from a hole in the ground and a lot of burned timbers to a pretty nice building that's been repurposed several times since it was originally built in the late 70s. But, questions? Has Old Town Pocatello been consulted in any of this? I don't see their name in any of these documents, in any of the stuff that I've written.
You mean historic downtown?
It's called Old Town Pocatello, is the name of the organization.
They changed their name, didn't they?
Yeah, it still registers as Old Town.
Oh, okay.
Yes, Stephanie, right? And so that was the first meeting we had, when I came to Pocatello, is we went and met with her, we told her what we were doing, what the purpose was. She helped us advertise that first survey and get the word out, to ensure that the people that she interacts with and represents were involved in this. And so from the very beginning, we were in touch with them, and they helped us, you know, get the word out.
Have they put any sort of written endorsement of what you're doing, or anything like that, into this plan?
They have not provided that.
No.
But we can approach Stephanie again and get additional feedback from her during this draft process.
Good.
They have been apprised, as we've been making progress.
Okay. Just out of a curiosity, redoing all these things and building to the standard, what's the increased cost to the property owner, instead of doing modern construction techniques and materials?
We don't have a measure of that. As I had said before, that there's not just one way to do it, there's still flexibility in making choices. And so, in the end, if you have a number of choices, you may say, well, all of these are appropriate, but this one may be the cheapest, this one may not be the cheapest, but it may be projected to last the longest. There's going to be choices for a property owner to be able to make in there. There's going to be choices for a property owner to be able to make in there.
But in any event, it's going to be more expensive than using modern construction materials and techniques?
I think it depends on what the modern materials are.
Well, if I was going modern, I'd go least expensive that would do the job.
And sometimes a modern material may be the least expensive, but it may not be appropriate in the historic district. It could be appropriate everywhere else, you know, that's not the historic district. But we're saying here, there's a special character, and that that may not be the cheapest place to do that kind of work.
Okay.
Okay, council, any other questions? Sounds great, thank you. Thank you very much for the update. We appreciate it. Okay, we will move to agenda item number nine is House Bill 508 update. Representative Rick Cheatham will update the council on House Bill 508.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this, what I want to talk about for a minute is a little bit of history, but it only goes back a couple of years. In 2022, House Bill 499 passed the legislature, and it was intended to move a whole series of post-qualified law enforcement and professionals under the rule of AD and Percy. And when it was implemented, July of that year, and Percy literally implemented exactly what was written, they left out an important group because the word supervisor didn't appear in the bill. And we discovered that emergency communications officers, to everyone's dismay, if they became a supervisor and moved from just being somebody running a console in dispatch, if they became a supervisor of that department, they no longer qualified for rule of AD. They fell back under rule of 90. And Heather brought this to my attention, you know, our HR department, last summer when it had become a problem, and brought me some information. And I introduced the bill this year, and ironically, I was not the only one to introduce this bill. Marco Erickson, who originally proposed 499 in 2022, was working on the exact same thing when I got to Boise and discovered he was doing the same thing. He was busy on a lot of health and welfare issues, and so I kind of carried the water on getting this one done. But we passed it this year and amended that post-certified emergency communication officer supervisors will not be qualified to work under the rule of 80, which means that if their age and their time of service equal 80, they're qualified to retire. And if you've ever sat over there, as I did a couple of years ago, and listened to what they go through every night or every day, and the calls that they get and the kind of services that they provide, and many times, the unanswered questions that go with what they've just done, they go home at the end of a shift and they don't know if that baby was saved, or if the ambulance got there in time. They don't know. And they're kind of left hanging until they find out later. And there's a lot of mental anguish. There was a call that I'll never forget, two years ago when I was there, that will haunt me forever. I think the guy lived, the last one I left at 3:00 in the morning, but it was an interesting experience. Anyway, so I carried this bill, and it got passed, and I had a commemorative issue of the bill issued, and I'd like to present that to Heather.
Both of you there, at the same time, you both actually looked at the same time.
Wait, Rick.
Rick, you got to go back.
Marley's need to.
Well, my pictures aren't good enough for... Yeah, Rick, thank you, Representative Cheatham. Thank you for that. That really truly did make a difference for all dispatchers in the entire state, and it was appropriate where.
There were several hundred people affected by that, you know, just in our department. I don't know, Chief, how many supervisors? We have six just in our department. And you look across the state, and there were a lot of people affected by this. The ironic thing about Percy is we've had people working under rule of 90 all these years, and when you change, they go to what they call a mixed blend. So if you've got 10 years under rule of 90, and now you've got to go 10 years under rule of 80 before you retire, you actually get to retire under the rule of 85, because they mix those together. So the people working over here who have lots and lots of years' independence won't really be affected very much by this. But it is a great recruitment tool and retention tool for future employees down the road.
Oh, absolutely. And it's amazing to me that the dispatch, and for sure, the dispatch supervisors were never included in that. Our emergency services couldn't function without dispatch.
That's right.
And it's even more appropriate where our dispatch is acertified, one of the top 300 and chief six, 310 in the world, not just in the state, but in the world, and so absolutely appropriate. So thank you.
One other comment, you know, after I spent the night with those ladies that night in dispatch, and I certainly don't mean this remark as derogatory to police or fire or ambulance, but they're the real first responders. They're the people who are at the end of the phone when you need help.
Yeah, that's true.
There is a man in there.
Yeah.
Perfect, well, thank you.
Brian does a good job.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for, it's a great ending for today's work session. So thank you for presenting that and for thinking of that. And Heather, thank you for pushing that along as well. So with that, thank you for being here, and we are adjourned.